Good evening, welcome to Mill Creek Township Municipal Building and the Monthly Planning Commission meeting. This time I call me on February 7th, 2017 to order. All please rise and join us in placing allegiance to the flag.
I place allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the public for justice, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. If you have not signed the attendance sheet back there, please do for the record. Let me introduce the members of the Planning Commission or support staff quickly here. On my far left, coming toward me Doug Provan, next to me Tim Nagal, Scott Stewart, and Pete Cabea. And from starting from my far right is Denise Bizarro, the Recorder Secretary, Dave Skelly, John Police. And the back, the young lady in the back there is Julie Maggi, the Assistant, Dominant Administrator, and next to her is Matt Waldinger, the Land Development Coordinator. And the young man with the beard back here is Mark Shaw, the Township Solicitor, and next to him is Rick Morris, the Township Engineer, and I am Gene Stromeyer. Before we begin, I'll talk for most of the 15 minutes of last month's meeting as written.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Very good, thank you. The Mill Creek Planning Commission is a recommending body that hears testimonies, asks and answers questions, deliberates and passes our recommendations on the Mill Creek Township Supervisors and makes final decisions on issues brought before us. Subdivision of land development discussed tonight, backed on by the Planning Commission, we consider the Township Supervisors' regular meeting to be held on the 20th of February at 7:00 PM in this room. Res zoning discussed tonight, backed on by the Planning Commission, will be considered by the Township Supervisors at their regular meeting on Tuesday, March 14th at 9:30 AM in this room here. Alright, first item on the agenda tonight is a land development sketch plan to show the concept of a 1,932 square foot building with associated parking and store management so it's located northeast corner of 12th, West 12th Street and Fillmore Avenue and Track 15. Is someone here to, sir, please give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening, I'm Matt Swanson, Ray Bell Surveying and Engineering, 10560 Walnut Street, Albion, PA. I'm also here with the owner of the property, David Nowson. We're basically submitting this sketch plan because I've been having discussions with Mr. Waldinger and the way I understand it, some modifications are going to have to be requested for this land development plan. So we're just starting the process with the sketch plan so that we can have your comments and input tonight.
Okay. I don't know if it would discuss with Mr. Waldinger, but having to do with the line of sight here coming around the corner on Fillmore Avenue off of West 12th Street.
That was not discussed.
Okay. The township says that you have to have from the tangential point here where the curve meets with the straight, a minimum of 20 feet to your, of non-driveway. Okay?
Uh huh.
Which would essentially eliminate two of your parking places.
Is that part of the site triangle?
No, that's in the PPIC as far as driveway regulations.
Okay.
But I'm assuming you need the parking space.
We do, yeah. There was already a variance granted for the number of parking spaces?
Yes, yes, we understand that.
Maybe we could amend that to have less parking spaces.
He needs all the parking spaces.
Yeah, he needs all the parking spaces shown.
If you can keep this a little clearer, so we can like align the sign.
Yes. No signage anywhere here where you could block this guy's view from seeing around the corner, seeing somebody backing out on Fillmore Avenue.
Well, one other thing, Gene.
Oh.
Not just signs, but trees, shrubs.
Any obstructions.
Any obstruction.
Maybe go along with the parking spaces, but you've got to keep a line of sight.
So, in other words, we're foregoing the 20 feet, or at least that's what we're recommending anything to do?
So that would be a modification that we would request.
Correct.
Okay. Anything else? Continue on with your plans.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, then we have two rezoning requests here, one, I'm sorry, I did not ask for public comment. Anybody have anything to say about this property at 12th and Fillmore? Okay, sorry about that. Rezoning Dean Ramdani, the property located 3229 West 38th Street, now zoned R1, single family residential district, asking for change in classification to R2, low-density residential district. Go ahead, please, your name and address, please.
My name is Dean Ramdani, my wife Angie. We live at 4014 Armhurst. We want to rezone this property at 3229 West 38th Street. If you'd like to put a duplex in, it's R1 right now, you'd like to get it to R2. No, we took it down.
You took the house down?
Yes.
Does anybody have any comments or questions or anything?
I got nothing.
Any comments at all?
There's a duplex next to it.
I'm sorry, bud?
There's a duplex next to it.
Yes, 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 we were aware of that, yes. Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Alright, then the other item on the list is, I'm sorry, anybody have any comments about this, please? Okay, thank you. The last item is rezoning for Westminster Place Partnership, the property located 2608 Zimmerley Road, now zoned RR Rural Residential, consists from approximately 11.4 acres, asking for change in classification to C2 General Commercial District. Sir.
So everyone's here for me, I see. I'd like to, I'm Mike Redlosk, by the way, I'm the managing partner of Westminster Place Partnership, 2601 West 26th Street is our office, and I live at 5050 West 38th Street, also here in Mill Creek. I've got a packet for, I think I have eight of them, which shouldn't take too much time, but I want to make sure that everybody sort of follows along with, if you don't mind, sort of pass these out.
Because they've got pictures.
If you want to pass them down, show them your photos. Pictures and exhibits and such. So Westminster Place Partnership is part of the Westminster Group. We're local and regional developers and been in the community something like 30, 35 years. And so, we, our last development locally, if you want to have some sense of the things that we do, is the Allegheny Health Network, Health and Wellness Pavilion, just west of here on 26th Street, and we completed that last summer. So, we're here today to ask for rezoning of 2608 Zimmerley Road. It's currently rural residential, and we're looking to change that zoning to C2. The current owner is Jack Burgess, and that's a revocable trust. And this site has been in Jack's family, I think, for many, many years. I don't know Jack personally, my partner Toby Frelick knows him, I think, and he's a local guy who no longer lives locally. The current request, what I did was prepared a packet so you could kind of follow along this logic, because I think after I go through this, you're going to understand why this zoning makes sense. So the first exhibit is number, number one. It shows the zoning map and where we're located on the zoning map, and you see the commercial district across Zook Road and to the east. And so you can kind of see how that's developed as a commercial district in general. And so if you move to the second map, so you'll see this is quick, but you can follow my thinking maybe better this way, keeps me on track also. So now what we have at number two is kind of how the future planning of this corridor is going. As you know, the bridge is being improved and that corridor is being fixed up a little bit so that the traffic flow can be much better. And you can see the C1 zoning that comes all the way out past our property to the west, and you can see the C2 zoning that's in the middle. And so this is just in logical terms and kind of following it, you would sort of imagine that that will fill in as commercial, it sort of makes sense. And the C2 that we're proposing would go with the C2 to the east, and there's a, the temple is planning to build very soon, I think, on the property that's immediately to the west of us. So that gives you a sense on your zoning map. The third exhibit kind of gives it to you in the real world. So this is aerial view of the site, and as you can see, it's really the same as the zoning map view, but now you can see it in real terms of how this, this area is developing, and you can see the commercial uses around. The map I want to focus on then is the fourth map, which is a closer view of the aerial. And I'm going through this quickly because I want to conserve your time, obviously, but I'm certainly going to be here as long as anybody wants to ask questions about this. But this is what's unique about this parcel. This is an 11.4 acre parcel, but it's only about six acres of usable land. And what's unique about it is the wetland and ravine that run through it. And I feel bad that the folks in the back, unless there's an extra copy, I guess, oh, you have one, okay, wonderful. So the, what it does is it creates this unusable area that's also creates a natural buffer. So you would think in good planning, you would be thinking about the topography of the land and, and how it really works in the real world. And so if you could run zoning to a river, for instance, or if you could run it to the lake, or to, you know, to an area, it sort of makes more sense than having things kind of on both sides of, of sort of barriers that are naturally in place. So we have a naturally in place this buffer on the site. And so the zoning request, when we look at it, it really pushes the, the usable nature of that property to what would be the east. And it connects it very well with what is the credit union and the car wash, and there's this big natural buffer that really protects the future, the residents, the R4, and so you have this natural progression that makes sense. Another issue that, that happens because the zoning ordinance requires, if you're in commercial, you need a 40-foot buffer to, between you and residential. Right now with that being rural residential, Erie Federal Credit Union, who owns the parcel to the north, next to their bank or their, their credit union, they have a 40-foot buffer requirement, they can't use it. And if you look at that aerial, you can also see they got wetlands in the middle of that. So we've got this commercial property on Zook that is very difficult to use under the current zoning situation. We have a letter in your packet from the Erie Federal Credit Union, supporting our request as our immediate neighbor. And I'm free to tell you that we're also in discussions with them about the access point at the light off of Zook Road. And we have talked to them about, it's obviously a natural access point, there's a light, it would need improvement, but it also helps with traffic flow to be able to consider that as an access point and not just the Zimmerley Road side.
Are you talking about through here?
Yes.
Okay. And they own both those lots there, right?
They own both lots, that's correct. I did put a copy of the, of their letter in the, in the packet, I think I mentioned that.
Yeah, they have that.
And then I've also included number six, which is the Erie County Planning Department's letter, which you may already have gotten a copy of, I know the supervisors get that and you probably get that. And interestingly enough, there's, in the second and third paragraph, there seems to be good positive feedback about why this isn't too bad. And yet then in the next paragraph, the last one on the first page, it talks about that your current, your master plan shows that as R4. And, and so that, obviously you'd say, well gee, maybe you should be in here for R4. The problem is, the seller was in here for R4. They were in here in 2013, and Mill Creek turned it down. So essentially, you've got a situation where the seller has this zoned, our residential, rural residential, there's no house or structure on it, he can't use it even for the R4 that, that this letter states. And currently, this probably is a better use anyway. With this usable acreage that's really there, this probably really fits much better as it abuts the C2 going to the east. So because you have a, a natural buffer to the west, and you have a natural connection to the east, we think, and we would hope that you will consider and agree to rezone this C2.
No, but I didn't realize this earlier, but I really should have stated this.
Okay. Anybody have any questions at all?
Does the property next door?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can you tell us what your plans are for the property?
I can. And, and the plans are to hold this piece of property, quite frankly. So we're in the development business, and over the years, what we found is that we have clients that will come to us, and we're, we're basically client-driven developers. So we have a client who, you know, says, well, we'd like you to do these kinds of developments, and oftentimes we can't find the property for it in the right spots. We believe this is a really good, long-term commercial spot. We've been lately in the mode of doing medical-type facilities, but we do all kinds of, of developments based on what really fits and, and what, what works. So we don't, this is a buy-and-hold piece. We won't buy it if we don't get the zoning because we obviously wouldn't be able to use it, and we don't like to come back later once we have a plan. But the board should be aware that we've been doing development for a long time, and there's a lot of development around the area that we've done, that we don't put our names on it, you see the user's name on them mostly. We were the original developers of the park site, senior living communities up the street, and we've done a number of medical offices. And right now, that, the sort of medical mall genre is what we've been working on lately. And so another piece of property that we own, that we bought a few years ago, was the old Dormais site down here on 26th Street. And because our offices are close, we go buy it every day, and it's a, a nice-sized commercial piece, but it was a wreck. And so we thought the best thing to do would be to clear that out and try to make it better over time and look for, you know, the right user that fits into that, that mode. So we have a few pieces like that from time to time. And in fact, there's somebody building a brewery on a site that we developed out in, out in Harbor Creek right now, if you've seen it. And that was a site that, you know, didn't look like much, and then we made it into something. And that fits really well with what they're doing out there near the industrial site, so. So that's what I can tell you. But I really don't think you're going to see us back in here, you know, in the next 12 to 18 months with a plan. But of course, when we do, we've got to come back to you anyway, and, and you'll make sure that we follow all your regs.
Very good, thank you very much.
Okay.
Anybody want, anyone else, yes, sir. I can go first, then you're next. Give us your name and address, please.
Good evening, I'm Walter Harf, and I live at 1230 Beaver Drive. I'm here at the invitation to speak to you because I am a member of the Temple Angie Hesit, which is going to be building next door to the proposal rezoning here. We're very happy to know that we're going to have a good neighbor, and I think that's what we're looking for. So that, we would like to make sure though, that the neighborhood is reserved in a method which makes sense to us. So what we're talking, what I'm suggesting is the fact that, talking about medical facilities and things of that nature certainly works for us. But we would like to be sure that we're not involved with something which we're unhappy about, so that I'd hope that Mr. Frelick will come to us and say, this is what we're planning on doing, and that we can then support it also. Because we would like peace and quiet, obviously, and I do think that it, we're going to be very proud of the facility that we're building there. So that I'm not here officially from the temple, but I am here as a temple board member, and just want to express myself that we're hoping that it will work out well for you, as we hope it will work out for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sir.
My name is George Hazuda, I live at 5159 Merrily Drive. I've been a resident at Merrily Drive for 25 years. I know this area very well because I travel it daily a number of times. My concern is not knowing what's going to be developed there. And I'm really concerned about how Mill Creek has developed commercially and invading residential space. So I'm opposed to the, the plan with not knowing, because once it goes to C2, obviously there are a lot of options there. If the developer said, oh, we're going to put a church there, or we're going to put a school there, that's fine. You're well aware of the traffic flow problem on Zimmerley, obviously, east of it and even west of it. And so I just wanted to say with that, I think it'd be prudent to know ahead of time what the developer is looking to put there. Obviously, I'm guessing he's going to lease the property to somebody under a C2 classification. Thank you.
That's his, he's free to, anything that's in a C2 classification. Right. Okay, anyone else?
Gene Utter, just a question real quick. On the wetlands, is it a legally defined area on a map?
They would have to have that delineated by a professional. We would require that they provide that delineation, but that's really overseen by the state, the Department of Environmental Protection. But we would require them to show us that delineation and know the boundaries of what's there.
And Matt, that would be at the time of development, correct?
Correct.
At the time of development.
Right. So I mean, right now at this time, there's nothing that says they can't utilize the entire, loving acres?
No, because there's no way of knowing without paying a professional to go in there and actually do the delineation.
I suspect, given the map, that the applicant probably has a delineation of some sort.
Yes, can I address that? Yes. Okay. So yes, we have a wetland delineation, and this map is done by our surveyor. So this is, there are real dimensions and it's a, it's a two-scale, you know, drawing. One of the, you know, I sort of, I think I bring this up so that you have options. How's that? I want to roll out something that, that just helps you maybe a little bit on this. It's, it's not really, it's sort of unreasonable not to have any real zoning on a piece of property that's stuck between commercial and, and other things. I mean, you've got this rural residential piece, and you're really zoning them out of use. And so, so you gotta, we gotta get a use for this property, and that's how development works. If, if we have the use, the ability to use it, then obviously we'll be able to drive development and good planning. And on the, on number four, where you see the six acres, you can see the, the Tobo on there too. So the top, the lines are topographical lines to show you that cliff, you know, and the ravine. And so we can't use the 11 acres, we can't use them because of the wetland, and we can't use them practically because it costs too much to cut down cliffs for a six-acre parcel, you know, it's just not that big. And so, what you can use. Also, up, part of this land is up there on the, the extra piece you can see to the north. That was another lot that was once a separate lot, so you can see the dotted line. That makes up a big portion of the site also, and that's virtually unusable, and we'll use that to trade the neighbor so that they can build their wetlands. They have to do twice as much wetland work up there. So the whole upper piece will be all wetlands, essentially, and that way they could use their piece to the east. Right now, it's virtually unusable, the way it's laid out. So you're solving a couple of problems in one, but it'll also show you that there is one other option that we would, we would be open to, and we would still be able to close on the property, and that would be a split zoning. And I say that, and I'll leave you this map, I don't have seven of these, but we did delineate a, a line that would give you a zoning line that you could do, so we'd have a property that's split, because there'll always be one owner to this parcel. You can't split the parcel up because, I mean, you've got all this space, you know, that's not usable in reality, so you're not going to be able to sell off the, the piece and subdivision. So we could take a strip that's in the unusable land and call that, leave it, whatever you want it to be, if it's residential, or if it's, you know, whatever you want it to be, but it will never be, be built on there.
But that would affect your parking requirements. Are you sure you want to do that?
Well, it, well, when you say that, we don't think it's overly concerning to us in terms of, of that issue. And when you say affect the parking requirements, we're, a building can only be so big as is, and we can't park in it. You know, I mean, literally, I mean, I get it, in Mill Creek, you can show that you have land for parking, but this would be unreasonable. I think you would laugh at me if I came and said, that's where our parking is. So, and we're reasonable guys, we want to do what works best for the township, because we're going to have to be back here anyway, and, and you're going to have to bless whatever we do. So we just need this property to be usable. I can leave this with you just for deliberation, if it became something that you'd be interested in looking at. It just gives us a zoning line delineation.
Is that a line you have or that people draw?
It kind of, but the surveyor actually laid out, you know, put a survey line so that you would have a strip of, of, you know, different zoning, so that as somebody next door, maybe the temple decides to sell someday, and they come back in and say, now we have, but, you know, we have but C2, can't we have a 2? And you can say, well, you really don't have but C2. So if that, if that helps in some way, we just want to work with the township best we can to do good planning on this piece. But without the zoning, there is, there's, you know, you'll be here again trying to figure out if it's, what it is, you know, and, and so we have to do that first.
What neighbor are you working with on the wetlands?
That would be the Erie Federal Credit Union. So they're the east neighbor, and they own all that property that shows up as C2, with the exception of the, the car wash, which is to the south.
So they've already talked to you about the possible mitigation of the wetlands on their property?
We actually have, yeah, we actually have an agreement with them. That if we, as we progress, if we do development, we would trade them property and, and improve the access so that you can get.
So it'll have to be 2 or 3 to 1?
Yes, 2 to 1, I think it is.
2 to 1, please.
Yeah, do, do the size of the, of the wetlands. That's what our engineer told us.
Mr. Redlosk, if the county's correct, and we would have to amend the comprehensive plan in order to accommodate the zoning requests that you make, there's a certain process that has to be followed to do that, that, you know, adds additional time and steps and so forth, and I'm assuming that if, if that's the path we have to follow, from a timing perspective, that doesn't present a problem for you?
Sooner is better, obviously, for the seller. Our agreement talks about, we've done all the other due diligence on the site, so the only thing we need is the, is the zoning to go forward. Timing-wise, we're, 2 months, 3 months, what are we talking about? Timing wise, two months, three months, what are we talking about?
Probably in that, in that range, I suspect.
I think if it's in with ninety days or so, I don't think there'll be a problem from the seller. I think he knows there's a process here. He was, you know, kind of jilted the first time, I think, and he's anxious to do something with this because it's been on the market for quite some time. Okay?
Thank you.
All right.
All right. What do you need?
Well, I need to find out, is there anyone here that is for the MS4 meeting tonight? Or is everyone still waiting for the rest of the planning commission meeting? Nobody here for storm sewers? Thank you.
I think I'm going to go out in the hall just to make sure I don't get a late arrival.
Okay. Do we need to continue on that?
Sure. Thank you.
All right, that was the last item on the agenda for tonight from the standpoint of subdivisions or land development or rezoning. Do you want to just stay where we are here?
Yes.
Is that okay?
Did you ask for a phone?
I did.
Yeah, we're good.
We did. Yes, we got two of them.
Just wanted to make sure.
We got two of them. Yes, we did. You got a couple here, guys?
Yeah.
We're down here, whatever.
We'll just tell them we're going to take a minute to celebrate. You want to tell them we're just going to take a minute?
We are going into our deliberation, go over these three items here right now and you're welcome to stay and find out the results of this. And as soon as we're done with this, then we're going to be going into a change in ordinance to the township. Some of you may be here for that also. Sir?
Window cleaning by Jim.
Okay, window cleaning by Jim, land development sketch plan. It's the development sketch plan to show the concept of nineteen hundred and thirty-two square foot building. This associated parking store more management facility is located in northeast corner of West Twelve Street and Fillmore Avenue, track fifteen.
And I'll remind you that this is a sketch plan so there'll be no action. You will just be giving your comments to the developer.
We talked to him about the agreement to not put any, any there to block the view around the corner there on this intersection there.
Uh huh.
And line aside, yes. And.
And if he did that, you looked favorably on the number of parking spaces he shows now?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments you wish me to pass along?
Nope.
Nothing?
Okay. Julie will come.
Res zoning, let's see, first one, rezoning Dean, Engineer Ron Mommy. I pronounced that wrong again. Property located at thirteen forty-nine West Thirty-Eighth Street, now zone R1 single-family residential district, have to change the classification to R2 low-density residential district.
And move for approval?
Move for approval. We are second on it. Pardon me?
I'll second.
Seconded. Any comments, any discussion down here? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. And Westminster Place Partnership, we're talking about state of thirty, sorry, twenty-six oh eight Zimmerman Road, now is on rural residential district consisting of approximately eleven point four acres. Asking for a change of classification to C2 commercial, general commercial district. Anyone?
Can you make a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on this at all?
I'm all right. I'm okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I abstained.
Pardon me?
I abstained.
You abstained, yes. Mr. Douglas abstained. Okay, so the, you probably heard, the first one was just a sketch plan. The both of the rezonings have been approved for recommendation to the supervisor, which they, we will be on the twenty, fourteenth of March? No, no, no. Is that what it was?
Rezoning Tuesday.
Yeah, rezoning fourteen of March, yes. Okay? All right, thank you. The rest of the meeting, we do have a new business. First of all, we have to do the nomination election office for the year of two thousand seventeen, that's from this group here. Our nominating committee, where is it? Where you at? Do you have any report?
I nominate. I, can I just nominate for everything to stay the same?
Yeah, you did.
Okay.
You have to officially have to be.
Okay.
He's making a motion to leave everything the same as it is this year or as of right now. Does anyone oppose that?
I didn't have to do a thing.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It looks like it stays the same. Our secretary is going to have to work this year though. All right, now we have a change in the zoning ordinance regarding medical marijuana. I'm going to turn this over to you right now.
Sure.
Okay. To Mark Shaw, the township solicitor, and he will discuss this with anyone who is here to listen to it.
Thank you. Yesterday, the Board of Supervisors had a special meeting to discuss potential changes to the zoning ordinance to respond to the Medical Marijuana Act that has been passed by the state. And as part of that, the Board of Supervisors have submitted to both the Planning Commission and Erie County Planning a proposed ordinance language that would incorporate certain aspects of that act. And I thought I'd take the opportunity at this meeting to kind of review those issues and just respond to any questions that the Planning Commission may have. Just a little bit of background so that everyone understands what medical marijuana is. It's used solely for medical purposes and its certified use is in the form of a pill, oil, topical form, or administered by a vapor or liquid. It is not in a form that can be smoked and it is not in a form that can be eaten unless it is necessary for eating purposes to aid in ingestion. It can only be dispensed to patients who have received a certification from a registered physician who's determined that the patient suffers from a serious or defines serious medical condition. The act has a long list of medical conditions that satisfy what they determine to be a serious medical condition. And the physician also has to certify that the patient would receive therapeutic and palliative benefits from the use of medical marijuana. Reviewing the act, the act creates essentially five new types of facilities as part of the act. There's what's called an academic clinical research center, a healthcare medical marijuana organization, a medical marijuana delivery vehicle office, a medical marijuana dispensary, and a medical marijuana grower and processor. From the township's perspective, the first three that I identified, the academic clinical research center, the healthcare organization, and the delivery vehicle office, the township's not making any special provisions with respect to zoning districts that they can locate in. Each of those types of facilities are well-defined within the act and are limited to being certain types of facilities. For instance, the academic clinical research center is tied to a medical school. The healthcare medical marijuana organization is really tied to a hospital facility. And the delivery vehicle office is really simply a place where the vehicles used to transport these materials is stored and so forth. So it really doesn't have any connection to the actual use of medical marijuana. There's no, public's not going to be visiting those areas or going to those areas for dispensing purposes. So we concluded that the existing zoning ordinance should adequately handle those types of facilities. With respect to the dispensary and grower/processor facilities, however, the decision was, the thought was to recommend that those two types of facilities, that special provisions be made to identify what zoning districts those facilities could locate, could be located. The thing to keep in mind is that the facilities are subject to heavy and frankly exclusive state regulation. For instance, a dispensary may only dispense medical marijuana in an indoor enclosed secure facility that is permitted by the Department of, Pennsylvania Department of Health. It may not operate at the same site as a facility that grows or processes medical marijuana and it may not be located within a thousand feet of the property line of a public, private, or parochial school or a daycare center. A grower/processor facility, it similarly may only grow, store, harvest, or process the medical marijuana in an indoor enclosed secure facility, again approved and permitted by the Department of Health, may not open to the general public, and must have fairly significant security measures implemented. The thing that the Medical Marijuana Act provides is that municipality's ability to regulate these facilities is frankly pretty minimal. The act contains specific zoning limitations with respect to a grower/processor. The act specifically provides that the grower/processor shall meet the same municipal zoning and land use requirements as other manufacturing, processing, and production facilities that are located in the same zoning district. And similarly with the dispensary, they need to meet the same municipal zoning and land requirements as other commercial facilities that are located in the same zoning district. Essentially, these provisions preempt the municipality from treating these medical marijuana facilities differently from other types of facilities that are located in the same zoning district. So once the municipality identifies the zoning district that the facility can be located in, that's as far as it can go. It cannot, for instance, say, "We want it to be in, you know, this zoning district, but only these areas of this zoning district." That's something that the act does not allow the municipality to do. Frankly, it's probably in there to ensure that municipalities preclude or don't impose such zoning restrictions that you can't have any facilities in the municipality. But it also affects our ability to open up certain areas where it might be appropriate within a zoning district but not other areas of that same zoning district. Unfortunately, we're, our hands are tied in that scenario. We can't make that kind of distinction under the state laws that's currently drafted. So the, essentially, the municipality's only ability under this act is to identify what zoning districts are appropriate for these facilities. And so, in doing that, some of the guidance that is out there talks about, you know, what can best accommodate the intensity and hours of operation of the uses, looking at, particularly for dispensaries, location along public transit routes, locating along main or high-order roadways to accommodate the associated traffic volumes, you know, locating dispensaries in kind of medical facility areas, locating growers and processors in areas that have sufficient water and sewer and would accommodate those types of industrial uses. The key factor from the municipality's perspective is to ensure that any additional standards that the municipality may impose would not exceed those of similar commercial and industrial uses. So from our perspective, the, we are proposing an ordinance that would, with respect to the dispensaries, that they would be allowed in C3, which is the highway commercial district. By being part of C3, they automatically also qualify for C4, which is the regional commercial district. These districts tend to be, are located along roadways that we believe would accommodate the facility traffic, streets like Twenty-Sixth Street, West Twelve Street, some areas around the mall and Peach Street. And also have identified I3 as an industrial park district as another location where a dispensary may be located. The I3 location in Mill Creek essentially is the industrial park over by Wager Road, Route Eight and I-90 area, which from a traffic perspective would be able to accommodate the types of traffic we would expect. In terms of the medical marijuana grower/processor facilities, the ordinance proposes that all of the industrial districts I-1, 2, and 3 would be open and available for that type of facility. Along with each of the, both the dispensary and the industrial park or in the grower/processor facility, we would impose parking requirements that are similar to similar types of facilities. For instance, for the dispensary, it would equate to what we have for retail and at two hundred square feet per GFA and for grower/processor, more along the industrial lines would be one per each four hundred square feet of GFA for the industrial and processor. Up on the chart there is a map that kind of shows the locations where the districts are. The areas that are in the purple, there's a light purple and a dark purple are the I-2 and 3 areas. And then to the far right, there's, I think it's, I'm going to call it gray, it's not really gray, but it's a lighter color that is where the I-3 is located. And then the balance of the colors on that map would be the C2, it was the C3 and the C4 areas. In terms of, also shown on that, you'll see there's kind of blue dots, large blue dots. What we did is we tried to identify all of the schools within the township and drew the thousand-foot perimeter around the property lines to give an idea of what overlap there may or may not be with the areas that have been identified. We don't have any information on daycare, so it's tough to identify where they may or may not be in the township. In terms of timing, the real impetus for this is that the state's application process requires the applicants to submit their applications on March twentieth of this year. As part of that application, they're required, among a variety of other things, to identify the facility that they are looking to use. I think they in fact have to have it under contract. And then they also have to have some communication from the municipality indicating that that facility would comport with the zoning requirements. The concern was, because of the nature of these facilities and the nature of how our existing zoning code is drafted, people could come up with a variety of ideas of where they think these facilities could belong in various districts. So in order to kind of avoid that confusion and avoid that, those issues, we thought it best to try to identify the districts that we believe would be appropriate for these types of facilities. The township would have to pass this ordinance on or before March, they have a meeting on March fourteenth. If they passed it at that meeting, they would have the ordinance in place prior to the time. These entities would have to file an application, so at least it gives them some direction ahead of time of where we think the zoning would be appropriate. We referred these matters for your review and consideration under section 609 of the MPC, so you don't need to have a hearing or anything like that, just simply provide us with comments within the thirty days. We would ask, to the extent you can do so sooner, we would appreciate that because obviously, given the short timeframe we're under, to the extent there are any significant modifications, the sooner we know, the better for us and the better for those applicants who may be looking to submit applications. And that's all I have.
Does anyone have any questions for Mark on this?
No.
Has everybody had a chance to go over it? Would you like to give them a recommendation tonight? Or you want to?
He's just asking for our comments. He's just asking for comments.
Yeah, what's I mean, any comments on it? And we can settle all.
Question I have. The medical marijuana delivery vehicle service office, do we have any restrictions on that delivery service? How many? Ask the name of the car.
It would essentially fit whatever existing zoning district would accommodate that type of vehicle facility. So if, there's nothing, I don't think, particularly unique about the vehicles other than what the state may require them to, you know, how they need to be structured or built or what options they need to have.
Well, the security is what I'm thinking of.
I don't know if those facilities have the same security levels because they're not going to be storing anything, they're not going to be containing any of the medical marijuana. They're simply the vehicles that they use to take it from point A to point B and at the end of the day, they're going to go somewhere. And it's the vehicle office where they're, at least under the, under the, under the act, it's just described as a separate facility. Interestingly enough, they did not identify those, that facility, type of facility or the academic clinical research center or the health organization, you know, as needing any type of zoning limitations or restrictions. They seem to fit, you know, the- They seem to fit, you know, they fit into other, there are other reasons why to have those types of facilities.
So, the office can be situated in any of these areas that you're showing?
Well, it'll fit wherever it's appropriately zoned for that type of facility, for a trucking facility, or, you know, those types of things. Right. There wasn't a thought that you needed to make a special accommodation for that type of facility, because it seemed to be the same as hauling anything else.
Perfect. No, I just wonder when these deliver, one guy in the car, he has all the delivery.
That's a state's process.
You know, on all of these things, the state, you know, the process is that the, once the applicant submits their application, the state's going to thoroughly vet the application to determine whether they meet all of the other requirements, including the 1,000-foot requirement.
Are you looking for a recommendation at our next meeting?
Given the timing, I'd, obviously, you have till the next meeting, but I prefer that if we could get it sooner, that would, it would be better if we need to make any changes that you would recommend. So, I don't need recommendations tonight. You want to take time and get back to me in a few weeks.
I got a question, Mark. You don't have the daycares on here?
We don't know whether, we don't know, yeah. The schools are already in our computer GIS system. Daycares aren't.
Daycares aren't.
So, it's hard to, the state may know where they're at, I don't know if there's licensing requirements that they have to have, that the state knows where they're at, but...
If they're licensed.
Although, it doesn't, just says daycare center, so it's, you know, my guess is there's still going to be a number of things about this law that'll unfold as they go through the process and they start figuring out of, geez, why did we do that? That doesn't work.
Your logic to get to this point, that these recommendations make sense to me, I don't, I mean, I don't know how we get together and say, "We agree," unless we do it right now.
Just do it right now. I have no recommendation, I think you did a good job.
I do have a question about the daycares. If they have to be 1,000 feet from the daycare, and we don't know where they are, is it possible that there's no place in Mill Creek that these facilities could go?
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
It probably is possible, yes.
Yeah.
Highly unlikely.
Highly unlikely, but it is probably possible.
So, it's just going to go down, or go less than what we see here?
Correct. It's obviously not going to expand.
I know this property is a daycare, so you'd lose, you know, that whole corner.
It's going to come down to, if somebody wants to put one in somewhere, and the footwork will have to be done to make sure that it's about a feet from the property line of the school or daycare.
Which is already on the book.
And the state will not give.
The state will take care of that, not us.
Correct.
License, if it isn't good in regulation.
Well, what I meant is, I don't want the township to have a problem, because we made an ordinance, in effect, we can't be, nobody can locate.
We don't have a choice here. The state is mandating with the law, they passed the law. A little bit different, a little bit of a unique situation.
They did on 1,000 feet.
Industry goes.
Well, what he's saying is, maybe, you know, if we're only including the zones that we include and not added another one, we've canceled out all the areas.
He's saying by adding, like, a C2.
A C2 or something else. Which I'm not suggesting that, but that's...
It's within the right of the township to designate what zoning districts it can be in.
That's what I'm saying.
So, we have, we have essentially designated them. Township has designated them as C3 and I-1, 2, and 3. If down the road, you can sum it into the category.
I'm sure I understand, so what you're saying is, we can say they can go into these districts, but if the state says they've got to be 1,000 feet away, we're still...
Yeah, I mean, we've identified the districts, the state requirements are what's the limiting factor, not what we've identified.
Sure.
And frankly, I don't know how we would go about trying to identify every, I'd say the phone book, but the phone books don't exist anymore, so...
One would be here this week, and the next week it's gone.
Right.
It's got to be somewhere.
Okay, any other questions for Mark or comments for Mark? Are we in agreement as is written?
Yes. Do we want motion?
No.
They don't act?
Just making a recommendation?
Yes, just a recommendation. Correct.
I think if you're going to make a recommendation from the Planning Commission, I think you need to have a vote. But I would take public comment before you vote.
So moved.
We can move in a second.
Do you want to do any public comment?
Yeah. Yeah, you need to take a public comment before you vote.
Yes, I guess we should, yes. Anyone have any comments about this at all? Sir, if you want to identify yourself, give us your name and address, please.
Oh, do I have to?
Yes.
I think you guys know who I am.
Please keep it short.
Okay, John Grow. My residence 603 Motpelier Avenue, here in Mill Creek, where I've lived, lived all my life. I'm going to give you a little different perspective here, by no means am I trying to argue with my fellow board members on the Supervisors or argue with Mark. Let's start off with what this is. It's a pharmacy. It's pharmacy, guys. Okay, it's, in my opinion, maybe a glorified pharmacy, with all the regulations that are put onto it. Myself, my view is, yes, we have these districts that we're at, and I'm going, probably going to go off the reservation a little bit here, if you don't mind. I think wherever we allow a pharmacy is where we should allow these. But, in the zoning district, keep in mind, if you, I'm sorry, Scott, I didn't mean to interrupt you, keep in mind that the state is going to squash a lot of these applications because of that 1,000-foot radius requirement. So, you may have a piece of property at Zone C2 that'd be a great place, great building and everything, but that 1,000-foot radius, that could put the kibosh right to it.
I thought the same thing.
Yep.
But, we're talking about, the reason that we're moving into the C3 is because the high amount of traffic in and out of these locations.
I understand.
Because there's so few of these going to be granted.
Exactly.
So, if you stick it into a C2, and what if it can't handle the traffic?
Well, where do we have the C2s at? They're generally on the highways, on the state highways, right? Okay. We also, you know, we're going to allow for the I-3 district, and I think Mark said we've amended that to be the I-1 also, is that correct, Mark?
For the growers, I-1.
For the, okay.
For the dispensary, I-3 only.
Okay. Yeah, see, I'm thinking that possibly in the I-1, whoops, sorry, I-1 district for the dispensary, because let's look at, if this is such a special medication that requires all this scrutiny by the state and so on, we do have some limited retail in the industrial districts. Let's look over in, on 16th, 17th Street, over Industrial Drive. You've got builder supplies over there. They sell to the public, retail, you know, they sell to the builders at, you know, at a commercial rate for them. So, there are some uses that are retail in that area there, too. So, what I'm getting at here, guys, is the fact that we have the state imposing their own zoning regulation on us. And I think as long as we just provide for the districts of where these can be located, wherever we allow a pharmacy, plus some of the industrial, the light industrial, and then the industrial park, we don't need it in heavy industrial, nobody buys anything in the heavy industrial, that's strictly for manufacturing. I think if we allow for that, let the state mess it up from there. I hate to sound so negative about it, but this, these regulations that the state has imposed on it are going to eliminate a lot of applications right off the bat. And that's just my view, I'm not trying to be counter, because we do have an area where we really agree on, all of us, and, you know, and I appreciate the work that Mark has done on, I'm not going to, you know, downplay that. And even with Brian and John Morgan, you know, we've worked on this thing right here. I'm just giving you a little perspective from maybe a minority report here on this, so, I just wanted to add that in there. I don't know if anybody else has anything else to say, but just going to give you my perspective as a resident of Mill Creek. Let me just say one other thing here, too, and that's just a comment about the law itself. We look at this, and this is not in the street form of marijuana, it's in the medical form of it, that's what the law is about. It's not the type that can be smoked, or eaten, or anything like that. Yet, we're treating it like it is, you know, because of the regulations, we're treating it as like the street stuff, you go buy it downtown.
Because it's new.
Yeah, the $5 bag, or whatever you want to call it, you know, the nickel bag, you know. It's not it. Yet, at the same time, you can go to CVS up here and buy OxyContin, which is the gateway drug into heroin addiction. You get hooked on that stuff, next thing you know, you can't get it, now you're out buying heroin. I mean, let's call it the way it is there, folks. State doesn't really care too much about that, so. Sorry, I'm not trying to use this as a bully pulpit here, I don't want to do that, but I just have to call it, and I think I've got some of your attention on that there, so...
My opinion on what you just said there, though, is that 10 years down the road, after this becomes commonplace, and the stigma that goes along with the marijuana part of it, it will be, it'll relax the rules, and it'll become...
Street legal.
Sold in, no, sold in drugstores, prescription drugs, just like anything else. And that's down the road, I think it's going to...
Oh, I think you're probably right, Gene, there's no disagreement on that, but this is kind of the way to pushing, to getting the camel in the tent, a little bit at a time, you know, so...
Well, it is.
Which is nothing wrong with it, don't get me wrong, you know.
It is, but it's, the state, well, we kind of all know why the state's doing it, but in order to push it through, they're putting a lot of regulation on it, just to ease the minds of the people who really kind of oppose.
Right, I understand, but, and once again, going back, this is medical, it's a medical pill, it's a lotion, it's, you know, a nasal spray, or whatever it is. But the other thing also, you folks as planners, I myself as a former zoning officer, I know that the restrictions that the state put on it, we couldn't do anything like that, not at a local level. Oh, my God. We'd have a hard time proving that in court, why we needed to do that for anything else, so.
So, what do you think the benefit of expanding the zoning districts, that it would be allowed to be sold in this?
Well, I think it's going to, it just say, hey, to anybody, you know, propose licensee, you know, to say, hey, we're going to welcome this, but keep in mind, the state's probably going to stop you from doing it. You know, I want to seem like I'm pointing a finger at Harrisburg, but in a way I am. That way, if they get shot down, we can say, hey, sorry, we allowed for it in this zoning district, it's the regulations that complicated the application, therefore, it's the state. And they're not going to give variances on this thing, I can just about bet on that, on those separation requirements, whereas here, we might give a variance, you know, the zoning hearing board, I'm not speaking for the board, but, you know, when it comes to variances, if a hardship is proven, they could do it. I don't think the state's going to do it. So, anyway, guys, I don't mean to confuse the matter, I just want to give you my, you know, my own personal minority report, I, maybe there's other people that want to give their opinion on it, too, so...
John, if I could, just to kind of add what you were saying. You know, one of the things we did look at is, obviously, C2 does have, you know, a fair number of roads that would, you know, kind of meet the needs of high traffic.
Sure.
The challenge is, is that there are pockets of C2 in areas that don't. And what do you, how do you balance that, and what do you do in that circumstance? And I think the recommendation was kind of on, air on the cautious side of, you know, these facilities are going to get permitted, you know, annually, they may change over time, if you allow it, and then, it's much easier to cut back if you determine that there's an issue than it is to expand. But I, there certainly is, in terms of C2, a lot of areas within C2 that would, that would meet the traffic requirements, it's just a question of the ones that don't, and how comfortable are you that that's not where they're going to go?
But I think at the same time, we also have to let the businessman to think, you know, on his own, hey, is this a good place? Am I going to be able to get my traffic in and out of here? And let's keep one other thing in mind here, we don't know...
And the state may say that, we wouldn't have any zoning.
Right. I know, I'm not saying that. I know what you're saying, too. No, the fact is, is that we, we need some regulation here, but are we getting involved in it too much ourselves by closing up those zoning districts? My only thing is just say, hey, let it into those zoning districts where we would allow retail pharmacies, okay? After that, the state's going to get a hold of it, and then they'll have their own set of conditions on it, that are going to, like I said, it's going to eliminate a lot of applications here in this township, because when we look at how close schools and daycares are, any other use like that, the state's going to handle that. So, that'll be their issue to handle.
That was the point I was trying to make, that we're making it too narrow, by the time that you have this daycare center in, there's no place that they can go.
That's not...
No, I know.
Yeah.
It is, because we're not allowing C2s.
The state is going to want to make the regulations here, not the township.
But, it's just like we talked about upstairs, it's just like a pharmacy, the dispensary.
It's a pharmacy.
We are making that decision, so we are limiting it by excluding C2.
Are you recommending that we open up C1 also?
No, not C1, C1's not a retail.
There's a lot worse things coming out of a pharmacy than there is coming out of this place.
Well, we've got C2.
C2 would be a pharmacy, would they be allowed in a C2 area?
That's for me.
Yeah.
We're saying that...
But it's not in this proposal, C2.
It's got to be C3.
He's charging a C3.
Yeah.
Or be a special exception.
Yeah. Right, and then also add the I-1 district in there because of the fact that it's a light retail, and there is limited retail in the I-1 district, you know, the light industrial district.
So, are you saying we put out a special exception in C2, and just be allowed in C2?
Yeah, just be allowed in a C2 there, like we do with whatever the type of use category that we have in the, for the zoning district. I'm just thinking from, what I call, I'm not saying this is not being applied here, in my own common sense approach to it, you know, let the state mess it up, you know, so, I don't mean to sound so negative about it, but it is the state involving, imposing their zoning regulation on us.
What about them?
Doug, please note that the PowerPoint's a little bit different than the final ordinance that was proposed. So, under the original ordinance, there was some, we were thinking about using a special exception for the academic places and so forth, but then concluded not to use that. And I think if we try to use special exception for dispensaries, we'd run directly afoul of the zoning restriction that's in the Act. So, I don't think we can create a special exception that lets us, you know, kind of direct where within the district it can go. We can, we either say, it's in the district or it's not, and then the state does whatever they do after that.
Right.
And I'll disregard, John, the state may very well, for some of these areas in C2 that may be less high traffic, or less accommodating to high traffic, may very well say, no, you can't go there, because there's not enough traffic, you know, it's not enough, the roads aren't going to accommodate it. But that puts that decision in the state's hands, not the township's hands, so that's a, you know, that's the decision you've got to, you know, that we're faced with.
Okay.
It's a, it's a close call.
I think it is, too, there. But anyway, I just wanted to offer my opinion, I thank you for letting me speak on this right here, and, you know, I don't know if anybody else has anything they want to say there, but thank you, Gene, I appreciate it. Thanks.
George Azuda, 5159 Merrily Drive. I agree a lot with what Supervisor Grow says, and what you both have just said, Scott and Attorney Shaw, is you have to be concerned about the traffic flow. And tonight, you just approved at 2608 Zimmerley to be rezoned to C2. And if you know the area like I do, because I live there, it could pose a problem. Now, I don't know if the state's going to measure how a crow flies from property line to property line, but First Alliance Church has a daycare. And next door to this rezoning that you approved tonight at 2608 Zimmerley, this gentleman said, you know, one of the things they do is medical facilities. And I can tell you, he's got so many interests to put there. And next to him is going to be a temple. So, let's say First Alliance is 1,001 feet and doesn't meet the state requirements, all right? You have a heavily residential area surrounding this property that you voted on, next to a temple, and this applies anywhere, but later, if that temple wants to do a daycare, they won't be able to.
They won't be able to. We don't know that.
They won't be able to, and I think that you really have to, it goes slow in this, I know you want to vote on this tonight, but I think you have to think about...
That could happen in any, in any district at all, or almost any district at all, if you say it could happen.
That's why I think eliminating C2 and having C3 in the industrial's a good idea, I really do. And we know the traffic flow problem along Zimmerley, obviously, you all know that. So, you know, I agree with John, it is a pharmacy. The other thing we have to think about, too, is if it goes into an area, let's say, just as an example, Zimmerley that we talked about tonight, it's high residential, is there going to be crime? I mean, I'm for business, I'm a businessman myself, but will there be a lot of crime, because criminals will be like, hey, it's medical marijuana, and you can do that and all that, so...
They're right, man, but what I've seen so far, so much security, is that...
Well, banks have security and they get robbed all the time. So, I mean, I'm just saying, I think we need to think about it, and I would just ask the planning... So, I mean, I'm just saying, I think we need to think about it, and I would just ask the planning commission here to really think about it and take a look at some of these things that could happen down the road. Because the temple, I don't know if they'd be happy if a medical marijuana facility was there. Maybe they would be, but if they wanted to expand into daycare down the road and they weren't able to because of that, then that would really be bad for the community, so that's.
Like you said, that could happen in any one of the zones that we have.
I agree. But that's, that's why I spoke out about C2 at Zimmerley Road, because it's not like a C2 on West 26 and Zook, where you have a McDonald's and those types of things. Um, and I mentioned to Supervisor Grow privately, where do we stop the line of development on Zimmerley Road? You know, I thought it would stop at Zook. Now, that property, I know, I've lived there 25 years, that was where, and I will be speaking at the supervisors' meeting on this, but there was a house in that property. And the reason they brought the house down was so they wouldn't have to pay the taxes on it. And the property looks really bad right now, um, which hopefully something will be done with that. But those are my concerns, that's why I think every time there is a rezoning option presented before the commission here, you have to look 10, 20, 30 years down the road, is what I think you have to, and you do. But just, you know, wanted to just say that, so thank you very much.
So, I have one last question.
Anyone else?
So, yeah, I have one question. So in order to go into C2, they'd have to do a variance, is that what you're saying?
If the, if they wanted to go into C2 the way it's proposed, yeah, the only way they could do that would be a variance, but given the application timeframe, they don't have the time to do that. They wouldn't get a decision on the variance until long after the application's already.
Unless it's extended.
Has to be submitted. So that's not, that's not an option for the entities that are looking to apply for now.
Yeah, we don't know in 10 years, that would be completely different. This is only one round one request, license. Again, I think as time goes on, the regulations will be, will change, they'll ease out a little bit.
Does anybody else have anything to say here?
She's on her way up.
Coming up? Good.
Hi, my name's Sherry Poston. I would like to address the opening up of the zoning, and I think I-1 would be an appropriate spot to have it. Now, I, with a group of partners, have been looking in exactly what you have discussed earlier of the daycare issue, closing out everything. We, we have been looking, and just about every place that's listed on the market at this time in fair, in, um, in the Mill Creek Township is excluded because of the schooling thing, so we really need to have it opened up. Being that there is light retail in the light industrial district, I think it would be appropriate to permit it there. Because this is not truly like your big retail, big box pharmacy store. We're not, they wouldn't be selling candy and socks and Band-Aids and all kinds of things. There's a very small restricted amount of merchandise that can be sold by the dispensaries. The state regulates it very strictly, and as far as security concerns, they really have to have two separate security systems, so it is even more secure than what banks or other organizations would be limited to.
I read through that, it's actually crazy how much they're asking for.
It is.
You have to unload inside and.
Yes. You can't be in sight when you're unloading, and that's another reason why the industrial district is good, because you need to have a warehouse or something that you can pull in to, to unload and load merchandise, because you can't be in public view when you're doing unloading and loading. You need to have a big enough area that, to meet the security systems, because they have to have a security cameras five feet outside of the perimeter, they have to have them at the perimeter, they have to have them in the building, they have to have another separate security system in certain areas. So you need to have area. Um, also, um, when we talk about high traffic area, with all of this security, really, we want to see what's going on around the perimeter and to know who belongs there and who doesn't. So we envision with our partners that the way we would do it is have appointments for people to come and fill their prescriptions. That way, we know who's supposed to be there and who's not. If you're in a high traffic area, you don't, and people are mulling around and there's cars driving, you can't really, um, for security purposes, know who really should be there and who shouldn't. So we feel that the I-1 is the most appropriate area, being that the limited amount of service and product, the, the way it's going to be delivered, the way it's gonna be controlled, um, the way the security has to be, the way the delivery has to happen. Um, it can't be just sitting on a busy intersection. We have to have the room to accommodate all the things that the act requires. And so we respectfully ask that you consider I-1.
What type of volume do you expect?
Well, we looked at the hours of operations of other medical marijuana dispensaries in other states, and generally, they're open from like 11 o'clock in the morning till 5:00. We also wouldn't want to be open after dark, um, for security reasons. We're at this point anticipating that we would have similar hours of operations, that it would not be full eight-hour days of being open. So probably 11:00 in the morning till 5:00, depending when we see what the, the volume of activity would be. But, um, in looking at what's happening in other states, I don't think that this is going to be like a mass line of cars trying to get into this, because you have to figure, it's not covered by insurance. It can't be purchased by credit card. And so we're dealing with people who have enough cash to pay for it, and with the expenses that the state is making you incur on how you have to operate and have all this security, have to have doctors on staff, have to, or pharmacists, it's gonna be very expensive for the growers to make it, for the dispensaries to sell it. So the people, it's gonna be people who can afford to pay cash. And so I don't see it as being something that there's going to be derogues of traffic coming for.
Something you're not considering, though, is, and I don't know what the other states are like, but they're talking the maximum of six facilities in a 13-county region in northwestern Pennsylvania. That means that you, you would have, uh, two and a third counties coming to, if there was one in Erie County, two and a third counties essentially coming to our county to make their purchases. That could create a fairly high volume of traffic.
It could create, but if you're figuring two and a half counties to this county, Erie County is the biggest population area within the northwestern zone that we would be located in, and they're talking about having one main dispensary for, approved for Erie County and one for McCain County. And that those ones eventually could have two auxiliary sites. And, um, so that's what we were looking at, and this is the highest population area. This is where the main hospitals are. So I don't think there's going to be huge traffic coming from Crawford County, from Warren County, um, Mercer, Newcastle, you know, those are not high population areas. We're talking about what's the population and how many people can afford to buy it and pay cash, because they can't use credit cards and insurance won't cover it.
How many customers a day does?
Do you think, man, they say that that'd be a high-volume.
And you have to have a prescription.
And you have to have a prescription from a doctor who is registered to give these prescriptions, so not every doctor can write the prescription. The prescriptions are written for one-month doses, so the people are not gonna be coming every week to fill a dose. They're gonna come once a month. If they're coming from other counties, they're not high-population counties, and they've got to be people who have the cash to pay for it, because the insurance is not gonna cover it and they can't buy it on a credit card. So I, we really don't think it's gonna be.
So you don't have an estimate on the volume?
We don't have an estimate on the volume, because we don't know if, uh, how many doctors are even going to try to be registered to be allowed to give the prescriptions.
Do you have a, do you have a number?
From what I understand, what you want, you want.
I-1.
Dispensary added to.
I-1.
I-1.
Yeah.
So that you have the grower, processor, and the dispensary, both in I-1?
Well, no, just the I-1 to be in there so that you can have.
But they can be in the same building, but they could be in the same zone.
Yeah, but we're not looking to have the grower and the dispensary, just the dispensary, um, there for the, the light retail aspect of it, and the fact that it's going to be easier to maintain the security. And also, we want to be a good neighbor. Nobody wants it right next to a residential area. Commercial, you know, the commercial zones are more closely bordering the residential zones, so I, you know, as a good neighbor, we're further away from the residential neighborhoods. We're in an area that's quieter so that we can maintain our security. It's going to be a big enough piece of property to be able to have the warehouse to pull in for the loading and unloading out of sight. So, you know, if you're talking about Upper Peach Street, you're not gonna find any properties that meet the needs. Even if you find something that's not close to a daycare center, the, the nature of these other properties are not going to meet the requirements that the state's imposing for, um, these, because you.
But you want the dispensary to be in C3 and in.
I-1, yeah.
In your business plan, how many visits a day do you, are you planning?
Well, we, we have no idea how many visits, because like I said earlier, we don't know how many physicians are going to decide to apply, to be registered, to be allowed to give the prescriptions. And we don't know what the demand is going to be, being that we don't know what the price. It's gonna be expensive, I can tell you that amount, because it's going to be expensive for the grower and processor to produce it with all of the security and, and, um, other building restrictions and everything that's placed on the grower. They're not gonna be able to make it on the cheap. And all of the things that they're posing on the dispensary, they're not going, they're gonna have to cover their overheads. So this is not, like Mr. Gross said, nickel bags. Because, you know, if the dispensary has to pay to have a pharmacist or a doctor on site at all times, that's not a minimum wage job. If they have to have two separate security systems, they have to have a generator that can maintain the operation for 48 hours if the utilities go down. You have to have a state-of-the-art data processing system. You have to have a floor plan that meets their specification, because you have to have a separate security room for your security equipment, that has to have its own separate, but equal, security system around that room where you store your videos. Um, so they have put so many rules that the overhead is going to be extreme on these, and so, um.
So, limited doctors can write the prescription?
Yes, they have to be registered, and so they have to go through a special training and get registered and certified to be allowed to give the prescriptions. There's not, it's not gonna be every doctor in Erie County writing prescriptions. It's only the certain ones that go through the process.
Yeah, I don't believe there's a number limit, though.
There's a what?
There's not a number limit.
There's, there's not a number limit, but it's, it's going to be based on who wants to go through the rigor of the regulation, um, to be allowed to write these one-month certificates that have, and these certificates, after the physician does it, they have to be registered with the state. Each prescription has to be registered with the state and verified before the dispensary is allowed to sell it. So it's a lot of hoops. The doctors have to go through a lot of hoops, the growers, the dispensaries. There's a whole lot of hoops, and to meet this, if there's real restrictions on the zoning requirement, what areas are being offered, it's going to make it effectively that nobody's going to be able to do business because of the rule with the school and daycare, um, having to be at least a thousand feet away. So, um, those are, those are just our concerns, and we've been running around like chickens with their heads cut off. And, um, if the zoning is restrictive, then it definitely shuts us out of this municipality.
Do you own property already in I-1?
Um, not own at this point, but there is something that I'm really interested in.
Have you checked out the daycare to school around it?
Well, um, there is a business that potentially might be daycare that we have to look into, because, um, the nature of the business doesn't appear to be the, the run-of-the-mill what would be defined as daycare, but I'm not sure. So that, that might put us out from where we're looking at, but, um, I'm hoping that it's considered to be more of a medical facility than a daycare.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
So an expansion into C2 wouldn't help?
No, and we've been looking in the, at the, in the C, um, areas, and this whole daycare school thing kills us, because the things that are in the, commercial districts want to be near where the people live so that people can come and buy stuff. And where the people live, they want to have their kids go to school and daycare. So when you get into those commercial districts in the C, they're, they're buttoned up against the places where people are putting, planting their kids. And so it, it's really making the opportunity few and far between.
Mark, what did you say was the problem with the I?
One of the considerations when we looked at I-1 and, you know, do you, do you identify dispensaries in I-1 is that many of the I-1 locations, as you see on the map, are, um, not frankly bordered on, on main thoroughfares. They're, they're, you know, there's secondary roads that get, that are between the main thoroughfare and I-1. And so if you would happen to locate a dispensary on I-1, and the assumptions that, that they are following in terms of that they're, if they're wrong and there's a lot of traffic, you're gonna have some significant issues in terms of, of, uh, dealing with that traffic in that location. Um, so that's, that's one of the primary reasons in terms of I-1, why that was not viewed as being attractive, because it, because they're generally not located on main thoroughfares.
But she couldn't still go in for a variance in I-1, couldn't she?
She can always ask for a variance, I don't know how. Again.
We're on such a tight.
Again, the challenge is the timing of it is such.
Because they're only taking applications for permits between February 10th and March the 10th. And we have to have a floor plan and our security system and everything set up. And so if we don't, um, have some kind of strong feeling on this, um, quickly, then we really have to go pursue other options in other townships, because we can't afford to wait and then miss the deadline to get the permit, and then everything is over.
Do you understand his point? If you opened up and the traffic couldn't get to you, you'd fail anyways, so.
Well, anybody that's looking for something in I-1 would be considering that, so, um, I, you know, I wouldn't be looking at a property where I thought.
If you don't know what kind of volume you're talking about, that could be an issue.
Well, the place that we're looking at is, is pretty close to a main road. It's like half a mile from a bus stop, so it's, the, 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 um, application says one thing that they're considering is how close you are to public transportation. And so anybody who's looking to apply is going to exclude anything that's not on the bus line. So when you say I-3 to go down on Route 8 up on Wager Road, you know, there's no bus that's gonna stop anywhere near that, so that is not anything that we would even consider looking at, because it's not within walking distance of a bus stop. So these other places that are out of the way behind residential neighborhoods, they are not going to have any kind of, be near any route for public transportation, so they wouldn't be considered for, for this purpose, for some, you know, for the investment that it takes to get the permit. We're not going.
It's hard to find two and everything just to one.
Yeah, because we're not going to pick something that the state is going to say, well, you didn't meet, um, this criteria or that criteria, forget it, you jumped through 99 hoops, but you're not near a bus stop, you know. So we're not going to look at any industrial places that aren't near public transportation, which aren't near, and public transportation is only on the relatively close to main drags. So for those who are seeking these permits, they are not considering these other industrial things. And you can say, okay, well, we'll open it up to I- say, okay, well, we'll open it up to I-3, but if, if, if it's not suitable for the purpose, then nobody's going to consider those anyway. But the I-1, really, there is a place that I think would be real suitable.
Any application process, has the state defined what they view daycare centers to be? Because the act doesn't.
It just says daycare center. So, I don't know.
Clear, clear as mud.
Right. So, I guess it would be if the business called themselves a daycare center, and they got a business permit to be...
But it doesn't, the act, the act just says daycare centers, and that's all it says.
Yeah, but you can't have a daycare center without being licensed.
Believe me, you can.
I don't think you can have a daycare center...
I don't know.
So, there, there could be one anywhere, and we wouldn't even know it, because they don't have to have a sign up front either, do they?
No, they don't. No, obviously. But they do it as a small...
Yeah, but the state has a list of licensed facilities. There's definitely got to be a list of...
State, go ahead.
Well, would you have a problem with the way it's written? If you, you can go in and get a variance, ask for a variance.
Well, we wouldn't be able to get a variance within the deadline. And so, that's why we're asking for the consideration here.
The timeframe that it's stated, I'm not going to make it...
I know, but we shouldn't, we're trying to be accommodated, but we can't solve it.
I understand that. And will the state give you an extension for that date? We don't know.
I doubt it very much. They haven't indicated any, any such hope for that. And I'm just, you know, in that if your concern is that you have an industrial park that's I-1, that is in an out-of-the-way place behind a residential district, that somebody might want to put a dispensary in, I would argue that with everything that the state is requiring, that nobody's going to want to make a misstep on the public transportation thing.
But that doesn't really matter. We have to consume, we have to assume that it could go anywhere. I mean, it's irrelevant whether it's good for business or not. And there are pockets of I-1 that are tucked way down into residential areas.
Are there commercial districts that are near residential areas?
There sure is, C2.
Yeah. And so, you know, with that respect, I, I don't think it would be any more disruptive than allowing it in a commercial district where people are driving past residential districts to get to a commercial district as to drive past a residential district if they had to, to get to an industrial district.
So, if you were to do that, you'd have to amend that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All that having been said...
Did we have a motion?
We did have a motion, yes.
Yeah. I, I'm still going to move that we recommend it as written. They still have a vehicle of variance if they, if they have, if it's very difficult to find a site. I don't know how else to solve both problems.
We have a motion, we have...
I mean, I'd be more inclined to, I guess, I don't know if we're done. I was just going to say, I would be more inclined to include I-2 if we wanted to make, ease it up a little bit. But I'm definitely not in favor of I-1.
I'm in favor of C2.
You're in favor of C2?
I think it should be C2, just like a pharmacy. That's my thoughts.
Fortunately, there's a lot of unknown, you know, to try.
There is.
It could go either way.
So, we got no recommendation.
We already made a motion, so you... I call for the question.
Well, we do have a motion in a second.
In a second.
To go along with it as, as it is written.
But just as a point of discussion, since this is all so new, we could always expand it to C2 in the future if we felt it was needed.
We could, yes.
Right?
That could be amended. There's only going to be a minute for that, yes.
The issue is if we miss the...
But this way, we don't miss the timetable that obviously we need.
Correct.
And at the same time, there is a vehicle to put it into a different zone than we want.
Yes.
So, anyways, I call for the question.
Any other comments? Okay, we do have a motion to go with it as it is written. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed to that?
Aye.
Who? One? Anyone else? Two? Two, you are voted also.
You vote.
And I vote, I, I am for this. Okay, one, two, three, and, yep. One, two.
Four to three.
Huh?
Four to three.
Three to three.
Four to three.
Oh, Jesus, we have a hard time counting now.
Four to three.
Hard time counting, I'm sorry.
You make the fourth vote.
I make the fourth one, yes, that's right. All right. So, as of right now, then, we are sticking with as written.
The recommendation to keep it as written on a four-three vote.
Four-three.
Yes, it's by four-three. Any other businesses? We have been drawing to sign tonight. Hard time drawing to sign.
So moved.
Second. All in favor of German?
Aye. He's going to be Shelby's driveway this week.